I'd like to call the zoning commission review, a meeting to order on October 5th, 2023 at 7:00 PM. This meeting is being recorded for transcription purposes and written minutes and attachments, if any, will serve as the official record of this meeting. On behalf of our virtual audience, we ask the public joining us in person to approach the podium in the event that they would like to speak. They will need to announce their name and address prior to speaking. Additionally, we ask the audience to save personal conversation for after the meeting as additional voices cause confusion for those attending virtually. Roll please.
Fisher.
Here.
Crew.
Here.
Marzullo.
Here.
Manley.
Here.
Engelman.
Here.
And the audience is alternate Shado. Stunning Inspector Wilson, trustee Augustin.
Trustees, Wigg and Asherall are attending virtually. Thank you. Our first order of business is the review of the regular meeting from September 7th, 2023, the minutes from the regular meeting. Requested suggestion edits to those minutes. There are no suggested amendments. I will entertain. A move by crew to accept minutes as written.
Second.
Second by Marzullo, I will abstain from the vote as I was not here September 7th. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Minutes are approved as written. It's okay with the zoning commission, we will skip the old business for now and move to the new business. The first item on the preliminary site plan review for Country Brook Cove. Quickly showing the screen. So. There's a lot that, the lot split has already occurred. There's a lot that extends, it's a flag lot that extends from 303 down to Country Brook. The Country Brook subdivision. Don Prey, which is a road within that subdivision currently ends right there. The proposal is to extend the street to make a cul-de-sac. So initially, my, my belief was that this did not need to go through a preliminary site plan or final site plan review. However, Medina County planning is treating this as a one lot subdivision. And so as a result of that, I felt like our code requires site plan reviews for subdivisions. So we would go through the process here. Is there a representative from the property? You'd like to step up and just state your name?
Good evening, everyone. Chris Schmidt, 1310 Sharon Copley Road, Sharon Center. Are there any questions that you need me to answer? Do you want me to do a brief, I guess you kind of went, did the overview? Is there anything else you want me to add to that?
Other information that you'd like to supplement? Feel free. I only have one question here.
Yeah, I mean, you're correct. Basically, this project is just extending the road, creating a cul-de-sac, and it's just one lot. It's a one lot subdivision.
So my question is, so Don Prey, when it was initially constructed, was under the subdivision standards of 20-foot wide road. We've actually, Mike Bahari, Forest Road Superintendent, didn't measure the road and it actually is very close to 22, quite 22, which is our subdivision standard currently. So we just wanted to understand what you would do at that transition between the existing road and the new road. The new section will be at 22, and if there's any slight taper there, you'll just taper it out to achieve the 22-foot requirement along this curved section right there before you enter the cul-de-sac?
Did you say that it's 20 or 22 right now, the existing? Is that close to 22?
Just shy.
Yeah, it would just be a slight taper over a couple of feet. I mean, if it's, if it was 20 to 22, it'd probably take a little bit longer taper, but since it's close to 22 already, it would be just a couple of foot taper, just to get it to that 22-foot width.
There are some wetlands in that area. Does the, who has the jurisdiction over this?
Those are with the Army Corps.
Army Corps?
I believe, yes.
They started a site visit yet?
Yes, yes, we've, we've. And yes, the Army Corps has been, been out to the site. We haven't received a permit at this point yet.
I don't think that I have any other questions on this preliminary plan. Who else have any questions?
Did, is my mind playing tricks on me, or did we look at something very similar, but it had three sublots?
Couple of months back.
No, I think that this has always had a single subplot. There was at times where the subdivision was going to come off of Don Prey, and then there were other times where they flipped it and there was a single lot. I don't think I've seen any concept plans or preliminary site plans that had multiple lots.
So to the, it's just because it's come up before us.
No.
Another time, correct?
It has twice before.
Right.
But once where the subdivision was there, and then it was about 15 or 20 lots.
Right.
And then once where it was a single lot.
Right, because they were going to come off 303 first, and then they changed it, correct?
And then they went off the other side.
Okay.
Is there still intent to access 303 with that flag?
No, that, that's just to meet the frontage requirements. There, there has to be frontage on 303.
Because the lot split occurred prior to the subdivision being inserted here, the lot is technically coming off of 303. So this was initially subplot as a flag lot. Because remember, this whole upper section here. This section here was all one 60-acre parcel. The next step that they proceeded to do was a lot split. At that point, they didn't have enough frontage here because we require 175 feet of frontage. So they used a flag lot coming off of here, gave themselves the 55 feet of frontage down here into a flag lot. So at the time of the lot split, this was the front of the lot. This was the rear of the lot. Inspector Wilson?
Yes, correct.
Yeah. But installing the cul-de-sac obviously gives them more than 175 feet.
Right. And that a cul-de-sac, they don't need the 175, they need the 90. So they got plenty now.
Based on the arc, yeah.
Right. But the lot split has already occurred.
Okay. Okay.
I know that some residents along Don Prey have also expressed some concern about drainage currently with their lives. You will be doing a storm water management plan as well, and I would imagine generally that helps to alleviate stormwater issues, but you will have to do a storm water.
That's part of the requirements. And just on the record, you did state that there have been residents already saying that there are existing drainage issues, correct? So just so that, that's on the record, so that they don't come, trying to come back at us and. But yeah, we'll, we'll meet Medina County engineers' requirements for, for drainage and the EPA.
There any other comments? I'll, I'll just start with the checklist then. Property location map, yes. The location, existing structures within the development area, access points, there are none. The general location of existing buildings, parking. Oh, thank you. The general location of existing buildings, parking, access drives on parcels within 100 feet of the site, yes. Topographic survey of the proposed development area, contour lines of two feet area, yes. Existing major vegetation, feature swirly area, and largest lit trees, one foot or more in diameter. I think that that's been satisfying. Yes. Location of wetlands is put in on the delineation introduced by professional wetland specialists licensed by the state of Ohio. Floodplain boundary and floodplain elevation is delineated by federal emergency management agency. River streams and their river, and their related river or streambank ponds and watercourses, yes. Felineation of existing drainage patterns on the property, yes. Existing wells and well sites, there are no wells on this property. Not applicable. The general location of development areas identified by use, including any these simple lots and restricted open space areas, if part of the proposed project. There aren't any. The general layout of the proposed circulation system for vehicles and pedestrians, other proposed public ways, access points, and parking and service systems, yes. A summary table showing total acres of the proposed development, the number of acres devoted to each type of use, including streets and open space, and the number of well used by type, yes. Proposed phases, if the project is to be developed in stages, and indicating the phase during which any common facilities are anticipated to be constructed, not applicable. Conservation, not applicable. Other reasonable information, as the zoning commission may require in order to evaluate the general concept of the proposed development. In the case of subdivision review, the zoning commission reviews for zoning compliance only. Subdivision approval, disapproval, or approval with modifications is determined by the planning, by the Medina County Planning Commission. There, we didn't request any other information. The development should be designed to preserve the natural amenities of the site. For example, building locations and placement should be developed with consideration given to minimizing the removal of trees and change of topography, yes. The development will result in a harmonious grouping of buildings within the proposed development and in relation to existing and proposed uses on adjacent property. Yes, the development will have properly designated open spaces that meet the objectives of the town's master policy plan and zoning resolution. It's really probably not applicable here. Is there anything else? I'll entertain a motion to approve the preliminary site plan for Country Brook Cove.
One second.
I'll entertain, so you'll motion? Motion by Manley, seconded by Crew, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? The question on this one that I do have now is, again, I wasn't sure that this even need to undergo a site plan review. We do have the option to waive the final site plan. I don't see any additional information that we're going to glean beyond what we're seeing now. And so I do think that this is an appropriate opportunity to waive the final site plan. But obviously, that would be a discretion of the zoning commission as to whether they feel that the final site plan would be necessary for the site.
As long as there aren't any changes to it, I think it's, it's pretty cut and dry.
And as always, if there's changes to the road of any sort, they have to come back for an updated review plan anyway. So that's, that's part of why I'm in agreement that shouldn't be, we don't need to do a final site plan on this.
Agreed.
On, before we absolutely said, we definitely want to see a stormwater management study before we say, okay, we're good. Don't, don't need to see a final site plan.
So then do we want a final site plan or?
As long as we get a, as long as.
We'll obtain, we can make it a, you know, final site plan waived on the condition that we receive the.
And, and that's, that's what I'm, what I'm saying, yeah.
That's. So I'll entertain a motion to waive the final site plan on condition that we receive the stormwater management plan. Let me, before we get a second on that, and also we will need to see the EPA submissions once approved. So those would be the two things, stormwater management, approval. Would you like to move still?
I'll move as amended.
Okay.
Second.
Seconded by Marzullo. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you. Thank you very much. One second here now to reset, and then we'll start. The next item on our agenda, which is the final site plan review for Blue Stone. Are you ready? Everyone ready?
Yeah.
The developers of Blue Stone, which is also formerly known as Town Center, have requested the final site plan to, to the site in Town Center. We've reviewed the preliminary amendments, and now we are doing a final site plan review. There's been a few questions that, that have been brought up to me, so I just wanted to quickly go through some of those questions and explain the process before we start on this, then we can discuss some of the changes that you've made relative to the site, or preliminary site plan as well as the supplements. The first question that was brought up is, why isn't there a public hearing? The zoning commission does not hold public hearings for any site plans, preliminary or final site plans. If there is a conditional use, or if there is a variance, the BZA, the Board of Zoning Appeals, will hold a variance. And so, for instance, with respect to the senior housing project, there was a public hearing held by the BZA, not by the zoning commission as a result of that being a conditional use. Discount drug mark, there was a public hearing because they requested, I think, three variances, and so that's why you saw a public hearing for that. But absent any, any variance requests or any conditional uses, there's generally not a public hearing associated with these sorts of items. And in fact, we had a final site plan review last month that underwent the same thing. It's not to say that we won't afford public comment as part of this process. We will certainly allow, if anyone has a comment, to state their comment prior to us voting on, on this plan. The next question is, why are we reviewing a final site plan before the Medina Plan Commission has had a meeting on the topic? Medina Planning Commission has had a concept plan review of this that was open to the public. Medina County Commission, Medina County Planning Commission only reviews certain, certain items, and there's got to be some sort of triggering event. So for instance, if there is a private street or a public road, if it's reviewed by Medina Planning Commission. As of now, there's been no triggering event that would warrant review by the planning commission. That's not to say that there won't be, there's still the potential for there to need to be a, a, a plan review by the Medina County Commission, Planning Commission, but there hasn't yet. There's no requirement that the applicant hold off on submitting to us prior to, or until after Medina Planning has heard this. An example of that would be this, the elementary school. I went back and looked at the file for the elementary school. The elementary school did not have a planning commission review because it was not a, a, a building or, or subdivision that would have triggered review by the Medina Planning Commission. Why are we receiving the final site plan before the traffic impact study is complete? We actually received the analysis results the day of that. It was delayed in part because ODOT has authority over this, and ODOT wanted them to wait until after the, and please correct me if I mistake here, mistake, say, say, state something incorrect here. ODOT wanted them to wait until school had started to do the traffic studies, since obviously there's increased traffic around Town Center when the schools aren't in session. So that was postponed. Then what happens is that the, they conduct the traffic study and the raw results are sent from the developer's traffic agency to ODOT. ODOT then reviews those. Once that takes place, it gets sent back to the traffic developer group. Then they prepare the first analysis of that information, and that's what you saw today. That's being furnished back to ODOT. And ODOT will have, I think, 30 days to provide a, a review of that. It's not uncommon for us to have this occur. With respect to the school, it occurred in the same situation. We initially, we received a traffic study that suggested one turn lane. ODOT ultimately required two turn lanes. I vividly remember asking the question at that site plan, can we add a second turn lane on the other side? Because at that point, there was only a turn lane going in one direction, and the answer was no, we have no authority over that. And so the results of the traffic study really don't impact us to a, to a great degree. If ODOT requires turn lanes, they require them. We have no authority to specify whether they should have them, they shouldn't have them, or whether they, they're requiring them. Similarly, if, if ODOT requires turn lanes and they cannot be accommodated within the current setback of ODOT, which is 60 feet, then potentially they'll have to come back for an amended site plan, but that would be the only reason that they would have come back. Otherwise, our, our scope of review is really limited to predominantly the buildings and the structures, including the parking. And so that's what we're looking at. And as long as there's no change to that throughout the process of review by other agencies, they don't have to come back to us. If there is a change because another agency triggers a change, they will have to come back to us, but otherwise, they're able to review the site plan now. Why are we reviewing the site plan before approval from any agencies governing the wetlands? The same thing is true. In part, we are in the establishment of where the buildings are going to be, where the parking structure is going to be are critical for the other agencies along the process. And so what will happen is we will look at this and assuming that we approve of this final site plan as is, then the EPA will be able to look at this and decide whether there's any mitigation that needs to be done. If that mitigation does not impact any of the site, as we've reviewed it, the buildings, the structures, then they will not have to come back to us. The, the, I think it's the Army Corps that's reviewing this one, not the EPA. If the Army Corps makes a decision that necessitates some change to the site plan, they will have to come back. Why are we reviewing the final, final site plan before the septic treatment plan is approved? The same thing is true. The septic plan is going to be a function of the sizing of those buildings, the uses of those buildings. So we will review it here for, for conformance with our code. Once we've established that it conforms to our code, they'll continue with the process. If there's any change, for instance, if the proposed onsite sanitary system has to be moved, they'll have to come back for an amended site plan, at which time we'll review that specific aspect of the site plan again. So while we're reviewing the site plan now, it doesn't necessarily mean that this is set in stone, that we won't review it anymore. Any changes that have occurred in the site plan, we'll review, just like we did with the senior housing when changes occurred. So with that said, is there a representative from the developer that would like to speak first?
Hi, everybody. Good to see you again. Nate Scott with AODK Architecture. Do you need an address or? You're okay. All right. Sounds good. Yes, thanks again for the opportunity to be here. We feel like not just our original meeting for the preliminary site plan, but some subsequent conversations that have happened since then have been really productive, and we feel really good about where we're at right now with the plan. Before I just launch in with anything, I thought I'd give you all the opportunity. When we submitted the final site plan application, I included a cover letter that attempted to respond to comments that we received from the preliminary site plan meeting. And so I'm happy to go down through any of those, or if you have particular questions or feedback, that would be great.
I think that that's a very good start. I think if you can highlight the differences, because the public has had the opportunity to look at the site plan as initially proposed. We've had the opportunity, we've also seen the comments, but the public hasn't necessarily seen the comments. If you want to highlight some of the differences and why you made those changes, that would be a great, great place to start.
Sure. Okay. So I'll just start with item number one that I cited there on that cover lever, color, cover letter, excuse me, regarding the required parking spaces. Mr. Fisher noted last meeting that we were actually showing more than what was required because we were making some educated guesses as to, you know, oftentimes, especially with dining uses, the number of parking spaces end up in reality being a lot more than what's required per code, but just to keep it simple, we went back to what was actually mandated in your code, and so that's been addressed. The required parking spaces based on the proposed uses are shown in the tabulations on the final site plan. Item number two, we had some parking that was within the front yard setback that has been pulled back outside of the front yard setback. Item number three, related to fire access issues. There was some concern about the driveway that was exiting the main parking lot along the southern border, boundary of the parcel and extending to building E. And so we actually realigned that driveway. So now the drive is coming out of the east side of that parking lot. It allows more of a straight shot for fire emergency vehicles, and the fire department has actually looked over the plan and is okay with how we have it set up. I also think that, if I'm not mistaken, yes, on the site plan, we've added all the turning radii for the curbs or the curves in the road, so you can see those, and those all meet the minimum standards that were sent to us by Inspector Wilson. Number four, the amphitheater use designation. I just described in my comments that we feel like that word amphitheater really kind of caused more of an issue about what that proposed use is than what it actually is. I think a resident was at the preliminary plan meeting and referenced Blossom Music Center as a comparable to this. And really what we're about is how we've revised it for this final site plan is an open air, you know, covered shade structure. I included a number of representative photos in that cover letter to give you a sense of size and scale for what that might be. Really encourage folks to think about it more as like a meeting place or a stop along the way, along the walking trails that are going to go in the, the central portion of the site and less concert venue or something that's going to be active, you know, five days a week into the, into the hours of the evening. So I wonder if, before I keep going, if anybody has any comments about that, since that was a particular point of interest last time. Okay, well, feel free to stop me at any point, or we can come back to that later. Number five, architectural style. There was some concern expressed last time about the architectural imagery for the proposed buildings that we were showing. And I, I think part of it was based on the language of the zoning resolution for the B3 district, that there's a a certain architectural standard that some folks feel has already been established in downtown and that we needed to be more responsive to that. One of the specific comments that I remember hearing, or that I noted hearing, was that there was too much exposed roof from the, from the vantage point of Ridge Road on some of those buildings. So as you saw in the final plant submission packet, or a series of drawings that was submitted, what we tried to do was take a look at what's already existing along both sides of Ridge Road and actually on Center Road in the B3 district. And it is a combination of pitch roof style architecture with flat roof, kind of your traditional high one-story or two-story commercial buildings. And so we, what we did is we revised the architecture of two of the buildings, the ones that are on the southernmost end of the property, to be more of that two-story commercial. And then the building that's on the north edge of the parcel, we actually reduced the kind of the sense of that grand pitched peaked roof, single peak roof that was shown there last time, and tried to you know, I guess, just reduce the scale of that along Ridge Road. The other move that we tried to make was to incorporate the identity of the clock tower there on the corner that you can see at the main driveway entrance into the development. This is obviously a modern interpretation of a clock tower. But we thought that it wasn't just an opportunity for us to respond to kind of the sensibility of the community, but also this project is going to need some sort of marker. But also, this project is going to need some sort of marker, some sort of identity piece. And so we felt like this kind of did both of those things. It marks the entrance into the development. One last thing on that before I'll give you an opportunity to respond is I did include in that cover letter, you know, existing photos uh of those buildings surrounding the development on Ridge and Center Road um that we, you know, observed and used as some precedence for revising the architecture. So uh any, anything else need to be said on that or? Yeah, sure. So if there aren't any uh comments from the board, that those were all the items that uh came out of our last meeting, the preliminary site plan application that I felt like we needed to respond to directly with our final site plan submission. And then I guess, again, unless Mr. Fisher has uh another way that you want to go about this, I was thinking that we could just actually use the final plan submission requirements as kind of our next order of business. Those are also included right there in that cover letter uh that I shared unless you have another thing you want to talk about.
Because those will come at the end, we'll go through the whole checklist, just like we did last. I just want to ask a few more poignant questions first or and and provide some comments. Uh the the clock tower, room 39, we have thirty five foot.
Right, correct.
Uh so if you want to exceed that, you'd have to go to the variance. At this point, you don't intend to exceed the thirty.
No, that's correct.
And also, just as an as a note, it's marked accordingly, but the SNS building still remains there.
Correct.
That that portion that's that's kind of an island between this project is not included within this final.
That's correct.
You see a circular structure that I can't, sorry, my ear went somewhere. Right there, if you can see it, what is that showing?
That's just a planting area, uh which is represented on the landscape plan.
Okay.
So there would be, the the idea. No, it would just be at grade. The idea it would be partially used likely for stormwater management because the site's pretty flat. We're going to have to get water away from the building. But also, it's just part of the kind of the image of the development along Ridge Road. So there's a nice wide sidewalk right in front of the building that would allow users to spill out. And then there would be a planting buffer between that area and Ridge Road.
You have a chain fence marked here to surround the the um existing cell phone tower. Is that an existing chain fence?
That's correct. Yep.
That one, I I did not have any more questions on this specific page. If anyone else has any other questions on this page, feel free to ask them, otherwise I'm going to flip to a different page on this site plan.
One thing I'll note while we're here, I was going to talk about it later, but along the driveway that connects the larger parking area to the south and the parking lot that runs adjacent to building, I may have said E earlier, it's actually building D, isn't it? Yeah, yeah. That dash line that has the W there, that is a what's called a dry hydrant connection. So at the uh advisement or request of the fire department, um all that is is a essentially a I don't know how to, it's a pipe. It's a four, four inch PVC that is buried underground and then has two access points at dry hydrant so that fire emergency trucks can pull to the one that's in that right there where his cursor is, hook their tank up to it, and then fire emergency crews can have a hose at the other end and service building D in that whole parking area that the northeast corner of the site more easily.
Correct. And so thi- this version that you're seeing today is the version that was updated and sent to you today, and that was the.
And that's the only change that's, yeah, exactly.
Provided on this was the addition of the water line. We'd asked for eight town township agency comments by September twenty ninth, but they were still working through it. I think the chief just got you the proposed markings yesterday. So then you updated today based on where he requested the tank access point to be and the access along building D to D. So that's why this was submitted to us today.
Oh, that's correct.
And that was the only comment, by the way, from um from fire agency while we're speaking about agencies.
The amended one or the original one? The original one would have just been sent it, excuse me, sent as part of a multi-page PDF that would have just had probably September eleventh, the date we submitted on. And it might have had twenty two ninety five at the beginning of it.
So this is the other document that you received today, and we can go over the differences uh in just a moment. It's very similar to what you was sent the first time. Um I had a couple of comments that I asked for clarification to be prepared to discuss today so that I can make sure that we look what information was here. And as part of that, he decided to amend it. And so what, when you looked at the the site plan that's submitted on nine eleven, uh by my count, there were fifteen trees up front, fifteen shade trees, and there were seventy five shrubs. Our zoning code, he had, I think that there's approximately three hundred and thirty feet of a frontage, uh again excluding where SNS is located. If you included that, it's three ninety five, so it's still up to the four hundred threshold, but it's three thirty as proposed. As a result of that, he effectively has four hundred square feet of frontage for us for calculation trees. And so he had to have up to twenty uh trees along the street frontage, and he had to have uh eighty shrubs. And so the amendment that you see to this site plan relative to the first one is additional trees that were added along here.
Yeah, so I don't know if you can see this from your seats, but these trees that are highlighted in pink, those are twenty shade trees now. So we just.
There, yeah, here, 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 here.
It's correct.
Would be where the shade trees are. It's the larger circles and the shrubs uh are located here. I did not count any of the other ones that went beyond the front of that building. Across the front, there's clusters here, there's clusters here, clusters, and then additional clusters here to arrive at the eighty shrubs that are required for the the site plan. And one question that I do have is, is there going to be any sort of signage that's not on the building? And I'm wondering where that is going to be, if you know yet.
I, we don't know for sure yet.
Okay. It's your, my. The reason I'm asking is because your landscaping is pretty tight. And so it might be difficult to incorporate a sign without adjusting landscaping.
Yeah, and I think what we, what I noted there uh in the upper right hand corner under the general notes is, you know, the intent of the code is to, for aesthetics and buffer and, you know, has these quantities. And so we'll ensure that those quantities are in the front yard setback, but the locations may vary slightly. So if we have to clear out, you know, six or eight shrubs to make room for a yard sign, then we'll put six or eight shrubs somewhere else still in the front yard.
And uh the sign will require a separate sign permit that will go through Inspector Wilson.
Okay.
Uh, the next question that I posed to you, but I I don't have a response yet on is for parking structures that have more or parking areas that have more than two rows. So specifically this parking area here and this parking area up here. You have to have islands that occupy ten percent of the total area with shade trees included in them. Um so this one, to me, it looks like this whole large structure is an island.
That's correct.
And so I'm, do you have any idea what that percentage is?
I just have for the uh, excuse me, I I do have, I, for for that entire area there that's around building D, um that's forty four thousand, it's just under forty four thousand five hundred square feet. And we have little over or a little under, excuse me, sixty nine hundred square feet of island.
So you're at seventeen or eighteen percent island, which is more than the code requires at ten percent. What about in this one right here?
That total is uh thirty eight thousand square feet. I don't have the islands broken out for that, but I know that for across the entire site, uh we did quantify that the total area of parkings, a little bit over ninety six thousand square feet. And the total island area is a little under ninety seven hundred square feet, so we're just past ten percent.
Yeah, so even if we break that down, you're forty eight hundred or what you said sixty six thou, six thousand?
We're we're probably, we're probably a bit higher than ten percent on the one around building D and potentially a little bit low on the other one. But again, you know, I don't know in the code if it specifies for parking lot or if it's just the total.
I don't know that a code specifies that we treat them each individually. Let's see. This is page seventy of our code. Section six B eight, B one. Parking areas that contain more than two rows of parking and is designed to accommodate thirty or more vehicles, not less than ten percent of the parking lot shall be planted as landscape islands. For the purposes of this section, the area of a parking lot shall be the total surface area devoted for to for vehicular use, including circulation islands or circulation aisles, excuse me. Such islands shall be developed and evenly distributed throughout the parking lot to reduce the visual impact and broad expanses of pavement, enhance parking aisle visibility, and to provide shade and to help mitigate. And it says mitigate heat and exposure on paved surfaces. So it just says the parking lot area, including circulation aisles. I think that that would be the question. I I think you could interpret that because you're calculating all circulation areas and parking area uh that that would meet the code. When I initially envisioned and read that, I thought that you would treat each one of those parking areas as separate areas, and therefore you'd have to meet the ten percent individually on the two areas. Those would be the only two areas where you have to have islands, given the number of rows. But if you treat then that whole structure as one parking area, which I will say is what we're doing for purposes of how this is structured, uh that entire thing is considered a parking area, there are no private streets, then uh then you could look at it that way. So it's a question. The only other question I had is uh mail delivery kiosks. You you don't need to know this necessarily right now. I would imagine that you'll have a mail delivery kiosk that will be determined by USPS.
Okay.
Right? If you do incorporate structures around it, that would be the question. But if you're just putting in kiosks, it will not require additional amendments.
Okay. All right, thank you.
The total parking spaces now exceed the required parking spaces. So you'll note that in the preliminary amendment, they had a notation that shared parking might be required. And I questioned why there would be shared parking because they exceeded the parking as required, I felt. And so according to this new calculation, they they do need that, so we don't have to go through the shared parking. Questions or code? I I looked through everything else. I didn't have any other questions. So Inspector Wilson, did you have any other questions? I went through the code at nauseam last time and read through every item, I think, as we went through it. Uh so I was not planning on doing that again. I'm happy to do it again if you think that we should go section by section through the code. But I had nothing further.
One of the things that um kind of stood out to me was first, we did get um some comment from the county on the concept plan. And one of the things that was brought up was um specifically about the sewage. Do you guys have anything from the Ohio EPA as to what kind of sewage system you would need?
Live by Dabs and I'm with Davy Resource Group, civil engineer. So as far as the type of system, it would be a treatment plant that discharges, treats it to the EPA standards and discharges it back towards that corner of the lot um that you see on the site plan.
Something. And do you guys have any place identified on the site plan as to where that's going to be?
Yeah. Yeah, if you look in the southeast corner on the site plan there, um you should be able to see an area that's blacked out. That area is larger than the actual footprint of the system that we're working through with them. So.
It's very.
Yeah.
Close on site sanitary, sir.
Okay, and then I, so I'm not too familiar with the um, the sanitary sewer treatment facility.
Yeah.
I know when we're doing septic, you have to have a backup site. Do you also have to have to have a backup for this or no?
It doesn't apply here because the the soils are not feasible for onsite treatment. So it it's treated to a higher standard um so that it can be discharged to surface.
Okay. So but so then it doesn't need a backup location somewhere on the.
Yeah, that's correct.
All right, thank you.
And because of the size, I think you already referenced EPA, because of the size of the septic system, it does not go through Medina Health Department. Correct. It goes through the EPA. So the EPA will review the septic site and will have final authority over its approval.
Yep, that's correct.
Um, I I I should go through one other thing. I spoke about fire. Um, we did receive comments just this afternoon from Hinckley PD. I will read that to you. Good afternoon, per Suzanne's request, I have copied and pasted a response to trustee Swedick and Suzanne back in August when I was asked for my opinion on the Hinckley Town Center plans. I think this is very consistent with what you see in the Medina uh concept plan as well. I, good morning. I I could see vehicle access for both police and fire possibly being a problem or at least a concern that needs consideration and how to properly address it. The parking lot connections and curved access road, including the bridge, appear to be one lane in each direction. Sufficient access, more so for fire equipment and vehicles, would be restricted if at any time parking were to occur in these areas. Large event, busy overflow, et cetera. With this being private commercial property, we have no authority to remove vehicles. Under Ohio Revised Code, section four five one one dot six eight one, with proper signage, we would have, we would only have authority to write parking tickets, but I'm not a fan of enforcing a business's parking issues. The township also adopted this enforcement under Township Parking Regulation two point seven. I would recommend, believe to be more important, resolution is for them to establish private towaway zones in accordance with ORC forty five one three dot. I would recommend, believe to be more important resolution is for them to establish private towaway zones in accordance with ORC forty five one three dot six oh one. This would only be effective if their management team made sure to enforce it. Uh, so there's really nothing I think that they commented on that would pertain to the final site plan. The one thing I will note is that I think that your proposed ro- that the circular section, the, the circular access drives are at least twenty two feet in width. So those conform to our subdivision standards, although the subdivision standards don't apply to this development. So the, the, the road size is the same size as any road that's a township road within, whether it's leading to a business or to residential areas. But I, I do suggest that you continue. I know you've already engaged with the fire. I do suggest that as this develops more and once you get to signage, you work with the police department to, to try to ensure that
Sure.
any parking issues are ready to get
Understood. Now, is there any plan of taking this to Medina County for review? The planning commission?
Uh, like Mr. Fisher said in his summary or when he was addressing the questions, um, we don't have any plans right now. Um, to do that, obviously we will, uh, if there's something like he said that kicks the need for their review. But in, as far as we know right now, we're not aware of anything that would, you know, force us to do that.
It did go through the concept plan and use, we do have the comments from the agencies.
Exactly, and there, there's, yeah, there's certainly
The planning commission isn't going to vote on this uh for either uh preliminary, I think they call it preliminary review process and final, s- final plot, I think. Uh, similar terminology, but they just, the zoning commit or the planning commission doesn't vote on this plan.
That's correct. So we're going to be in contact and cooperation with any necessary county agencies. The county engineer is one of those that I can think of as it relates to sanitary and stormwater management.
And, and I think that generally the county is the place of last approval, right? So the county and county engineers generally the final approval before you move forward. They're the ones who will do the final check of EPA to make sure that you got the approval from EPA before they will grant their approval. Uh, so that, that's really the agency of last resort, the last agency that you go through in the process.
What would be the impact of anything that ODOT would come back with in the next thirty days?
So the, the traffic study, I think you're, the traffic study recommendation was to have a turn lane going in both directions. There, ODOT has a sixty foot uh easement, sixty foot
Right away.
Thank you. And so each lane, I think, takes approximately twelve, twelve feet. So there should be room within their current easement to accommodate both turn lanes. If ODOT were to decide that they need for some reason to gain additional land, what they would do is they would basically the developer would have to give them a portion of their land. If that changed the setback, because their one building is directly a thirty foot setback, which is the required setback. If it changes that setback, they'll have to make that accommodation. So then they will have to come back to us because they'll either have to reduce the size of their building or they'll have to push back their, their building. But if ODOT doesn't require any change that would result in a bare, a deviation from that sixty foot right away, there's no change to this site plan. I wasn't super knowledgeable on this either. I reached out to Jared from ODOT, who is the person who commented on the concept plan last week to get an understanding of this. I learned quite, quite a deep lot from him.
So how quickly will ODOT have their feedback?
It's, it's anybody, you know, nobody knows that except for ODOT, but typically what I'm told uh by the traffic engineer is within thirty days, they'll have a response and it'll probably be right around thirty days.
Is there anything else? I'll entertain a motion to approve of the final site plan on the condition that you furnish to us the ODOT final findings, the EPA approval for the septic system and the final approval on the the wetlands from the Army Corps of Engineers, who I think is jurisdiction of this, is that right?
Well, we're waiting to, or, 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 we've contacted them. They have yet to set up a site visit to confirm the water resources map that the civil engineer put together. So after that, they'll determine whether it falls under Army Corps or Ohio EPA.
Then I'll just say whichever agent
Right, sure.
Now, if they make any sort of adjustment, um, that requires any sort of change to the site plan, they have to come back and get reapproved.
That's correct, and that, that's out by in section. It's chapter eleven. It's eleven point thirteen. Any departure from such plan shall be a violation of the zoning resolution. Any changes and approved preliminary site plan or final site plan shall be resubmitted for approval in accordance with this chapter. And that's again, just what happened with senior housing that came back because they had to change their entrance way. Uh, and so we reviewed it with the, the narrow scope of that amendment to the final site plan.
Does it make any sense to wait thirty days?
So we have to have this done within forty five days of submission unless they were to agree to a delay. That's what our codes is.
Right, unless there's an agreement to delay. I mean, there's a lot of, a lot of major contingencies on this.
Yes, I mean, if, if The school, the school had the same thing happen.
Well, I wasn't here for the schools.
But the, that, this, that's exactly what happened. And again, it doesn't, if it changes something, they have to come back. But if not, they, they've provided all the documentation that we need.
Well, the school was kind of down the road, you know, we're, we're closer here to the intersection of the center of town. So
But
the im- the impact of like the ODOT study, I mean, or whatever ODOT approval was, could impact the final plan if things need to be set back, which can then also impact the um wetland stuff, so.
Which if it changes any of the parking or structures, they have to come back to us. So any impact would be that would change something that our final site plan approves, they would have to come back.
Just seems that it's thirty days wouldn't be such a bad weight.
What is your concerns, Sandy?
The ODOT final approval, if that should change, then you've changed the plan, which then can also alter any of the wetland issues that are there, and we don't have any of those reports, so. But, but they would have to, they're required to come back to us on those. One thirty days or not, right? If there was a modification needed.
Let's just take the vote.
Let me, I, I didn't go through the checklist, I'm gonna check this quickly, sorry.
I, I do appreciate the changes you made.
Oh, good. Well, hopefully, hopefully you heard hopefully you heard that we were listening. We tried to.
I, I did sense that you were listening.
Okay, good.
Accurate legal description prepared by or certified by a registered surveyor of the state. Yes, property location showing existing property, town, eastern San Luis Obispo, yes. A final site plan prepared by a qualified professional and drawn to a local scale, yes. Use, location and height of existing and proposed buildings and structures of the proposed units. Uh, proposed units on piece of the lot, yes. Location of all public right of ways, private streets and common drives, not applicable. Location, well, yes, there are, well, the, the
We have the public right of ways, yeah, yeah, yeah.
Um, location and configuration of off-street parking areas and loading areas. The arrangement of internal and in and out traffic movement, including access roads, drives and lanes, other pavement markings to direct and control parking and circulation, yes. Proposed and existing fences, walls, signs and lightings, yes, to the extent applicable currently. Um, location and layout of all proposed
Question, I'm sorry, question, lighting?
Yeah, we know that that's something that, once we establish that, we're going to have to come back. Uh, it's just, we're not to that level of the architectural design yet.
I will also say our code doesn't have any
Well, I'm just, it says lighting. I understand what you're saying that
They're gonna, we didn't have any lighting, for instance, last month on, on Rock Ridge.
Well, we had the street lighting.
But we didn't have signage.
So they have to come back and get approval for it. Cause I remember when we were doing the, uh, no, that was because it was a sign. I was gonna say the one on West one thirtieth. Yeah. They're putting in the, that was a stall sign and they were putting lights on.
Location and layout of all proposed and existing, or stair, storage areas, including storage, waste materials and location of trash receptacles. Yes, sanitary sewers, there's I think two dumpster locations, Mark.
That's correct.
Sanitary sewers, water and other utilities, including fires and required and proposed drainage and stormwater management, yes. Dimensions of all buildings, building spacing setbacks, uh, parking areas, drives and walkways, yes. Topographic survey of the proposed development area with contour lines at two feet intervals, yes. Existing vegetation features, including large isolated trees, one foot or more diameter, polluted areas, wetlands and other environmental features, yes. Proposed landscaping and screening plans indicate a preliminary description of the location and nature of existing proposed vegetation, landscaping and screening elements and any existing trees to be removed, yes. Preliminary architecture plans for proposed development or use showing exterior elevations prepared by professional engineer or contractor surveyor, which shall contain their respective seal, yes. Um, a summary table showing total acres of proposed development, number of acres devoted to each type of use, including streets and open space, number of drawing units by type, yes, for per phased development. Proposed scheduled for completion improvements that are designed to relate to benefit or be used by the entire development. Such schedule uh shall be submitted with the first phase and shall relate relate to completion of such improvements to completion of one or more phases of the development, not applicable, this is one phase project.
That's correct.
Uh, a road culvert permit when required by Medina County Engineers Department. Do you, you don't require a road culvert permit, right, for this, or are you going to?
Be- because it's ODOT, they wouldn't have a saying?
I, I was referring to uh your driveway, the culvert that you're putting back to building D. Um, that would also not, because that's part of the driveway path, right?
Yeah.
It's not approved.
We would likely submit calculations showing that it doesn't overtap the road.
Yeah.
So not
That would be part of our I would, yeah.
Your stormwater management.
Right, exactly.
A letter from the appropriate public agency stating that the proposed development or use conforms and will conform to all applicable sanitary water, grading and surface and draining, where floodplain and wetland regulations, if applicable. We have them to the extent that they're available to us now, including through Medina uh planning commission will obviously require the remainder of them, as I noted, uh, as, you know, as you the following item, the conservation development doesn't apply. Other information necessary for the evaluation of final site plan is deemed necessary by the zoning inspector. In the case of subdivision review, the zoning commission review for zoning compliance only. We can't request any other additional information. Review fees, the applicant shall pay the fees as set by the trustees. They have done that as part of the preliminary site plan review process. So again, I'll entertain a motion to approve, again conditioned on the letters from the appropriate, see, the wetlands, the uh letters from ODOT approving the, the, the road proposal and then the uh conditioned on the letter from uh the EPA running septic system.
Before we jump to that, just one last question.
Sure.
Um, your, your dumpster pad, those can be enclosed or they just like, just dumpster chilling on the
I, I'm, I'm gonna go ahead and speak on behalf of the owner and say that we're gonna enclose those.
I, I figured, I just wanted to clarify, because I mean, it's awfully close to the church there.
Yeah, yeah, totally.
Those will require fence permits, see inspector Wilson.
Okay.
And then we'll also need a permit for the um covered open space, correct?
Okay.
Just to clarify.
You'll We'll be, we'll be, I'll be back a few more times.
Now that senior housing's finished and we've collected all the permit fees on that, we need some So I entertained a motion.
So moved.
Moved by Manley.
A second.
Second by Crew. We'll go through a roll on this one, please.
Sure.
Yes.
Crew?
Yes.
Marzullo?
Yes.
Manley?
Yes.
Engelmann?
Yes.
Final site plan is been approved. Um, again, just please, if you do make any changes, make sure you consult us
Sure.
about those changes. Uh, you did submit two revisions today. Make sure that Inspector Wilson has the enlarged copies of those as we normally have as part of the final site plan.
Okay.
So please make sure that he gets
Will do. All right, thank you all, appreciate it.
Thank you. Do we need a break or can we continue on to the next topic?
I'm good to go. Well. Take that role.
Perfect. And that's the last topic for tonight is the review of nuisance language and zoning. I appreciate that this discussion started last week. While I was not here, I did have an opportunity to review that language. And there was just a couple of items that I wanted to sort of address. Um, Inspector Wilson's free to chime in, and of course, any of you are free to chime in. Uh, the first item up was this question regarding section twelve point four, twelve point five. Uh, I, I don't know whether Inspector Wilson has reached out to our legal department, Medina prosecutor's office or not. What I will say is that unfortunately, Inspector Wilson cannot share in this forum any of the discussion that takes place with the prosecutor because it's attorney-client privileged. So it's really not a good idea for us to ask Inspector Wilson to provide to, to reach out to someone and then contact us back. Um, because again, that information would be attorney-client privileged. So we can always ask for a letter if we have any specific question for him. If it's kind of a, an ambiguous question or not, not something that's super concrete, I'll, I'll tell you that he probably won't render an opinion because he'll say it's going to be very fact-specific. If we do have the facts, then that would be different. What I will say, and again, I'm not speaking as, uh, as legal counsel for the township, I'm just noting my observation of this language. Uh, section twelve point four says the penalty for a violation of any section of the zoning resolution upon conviction shall not be more than the amount specified in the Ohio Revised Code for each offense. I think the key word there is upon conviction. When you look at uh section twelve point four C under action, it says, among other things, When you look at section 12.4C under action, it says, among other things, that if there is a violation of this zoning resolution, the township board of trustees, the Medina County prosecutor, the township zoning inspector, or any adjacent or neighboring property owner, who would be especially damaged by such violation, in addition to other remedies provided by law, may institute an injunction, mandamus, abatement, or any other action or proceeding to prevent and join a bait or remove such unlawful action, or unlawful location, erection, construction, reconstruction, enlargement, change, maintenance or use. So what I think is, when you read this to, in combination, any penalty would come from the court as part of a proceeding that would happen in the court action. And so the court would be limited to fines according to a higher revised code. I don't think that that is something that Inspector Wilson would let be, because he doesn't have the ability to convict a person. But again, that's me speaking, not legal counsel. If we do want a legal opinion, we'd have to obtain it from the prosecutor's office and would have to come by writing, and could not share that with the public. So that was the first comment that I had. The second comment was regarding fireworks. I know that you all were provided some language regarding fireworks and, you know, what to do with those, if those are nuisance, if you should limit those in any way. The ORC was revised to allow fireworks on certain days. That ORC language also said, and I quote, "A county with respect to the unincorporated territory of the county, a township with respect to unincorporated territory of the township, or a municipal corporation may do either of the following. Restrict the dates and times a person may discharge ignited or exploded fireworks purchased pursuant to this, this section. Ban the discharge ignition or explosion of fireworks purchased pursuant to this section. A resolution adopted by the Board of Township Trustees under this division prevails over conflicting," next page. "Resolution adopted under this, uh, over a conflicting resolution adopted under this division by the Board of County Commissioners in the county within which the township is located." My reading of that is that it would be far more appropriate, if the township wants to do anything with respect to fireworks, to send it over to the Board of Trustees and let them make a decision. They're also the ones who have more authority over what the police do. Anything that we do falls in the hands of a zoning inspector, and a zoning inspector is not really the appropriately suited person, I don't think, to handle concerns as it relates to fireworks, which generally are more or less a one-time event. So those were the two items that I had with respect to nuisances based upon the comments that were brought up last time. It didn't sound like, as of last meeting, that there were any changes to the text. And so the text has remained as I sent it to you prior to the last meeting. I don't know if there's still any further discussion on nuisance language, but I did put it back on the agenda since we did discuss the potential of reevaluating it this meeting. And just as a reminder for the audience, this is section 4.8, that deals with the nuisance, it's a two-line section.
The one thing that I think might make sense to add in would be like, but, but again, it's, it's one of these things like, how do you measure it? How do you actually follow up with it?
That's just it.
And the, the bottom line is, we, we will never be able to legislate people into good neighbors.
Right.
Having it there might give something to point at and say, hey, you're clearly bothering your neighbor by, you know, shining lights right into their property. Much like the, this past, what was the development that we, we looked at last month?
Rock Ridge.
Rock Ridge, did they, they intentionally moved the driveway so that the lights wouldn't be going directly into their neighbor's home? And it's not even their lights. It's, it's just traffic created by, and so like, in that sense, it's like, okay, they're trying to be a good neighbor without it having to be spelled out.
I, I do think that if we want to tackle light, and again, that's something that has been brought up before as a potential, it probably warrants its own section as opposed to being incorporated within the nuisance section, because I think that we'd have to specify more than like, light being a nuisance. I think we would really need to focus on some characteristics of the light that we actually want to meaningfully regulate.
Such as the direction of the light?
Such as the direction.
I mean, in, in the same way, though, that we should have the same for noise.
And we did, and it was removed for noise, because it was impossible to enforce.
So are we chicken or the egg? Are, are we gonna create this language and then later on, it's impossible to enforce and then it gets removed?
With respect to lighting, as I've said before, the only benefit I think that we would have to lighting is, you know, with a final site plan or something, we can have information that specifies if they have some sort of lighting. You know, we can start to at least control it there. Because as part of final site plan, we probably have more input as to, hey, we want to see the lights have this angle, or do the lights meet this angle? You know, once the final site plan's approved, or any other resident of the township, I think it's very hard. We're not gonna walk around and say, wait a minute, you changed your light, this light doesn't meet the code. But it would at least at some point establish good lighting practices, which would be at the time of any new event that triggered a site plan.
But you, you got the grandfathered ones, and those are the ones that are probably the most troublesome.
Right.
But then simultaneously, we could be putting in requirements that are saying, okay, like, the, the vegetation requirements for businesses. If we were to put something that's, okay, we want this many lights, now it could actually be adding to frustration for people. Where, all right, now I'm required to have this many lights, but really, I could get away with one or two. And it's, it ends up being a very case-by-case basis.
And in some places, it might make sense to have very little lighting.
Very few, yeah. Other places, you need it well.
Lots of lighting. And so are we really wanting to regulate that? Or are we really wanting to just have that open discussion with whoever comes before us and say, you know, and that's exactly what we do with Parkview Homes, you know, this, this might not make sense in this particular development. While we don't have any regulations regarding it, would you consider doing this? And, and those kind of negotiations often work very well with our zoning commission. And we do see the changes that we would like to see as a result of that.
Well, and, but, this is, this is, I think, we're kind of hitting on the, the difficulty of zoning in general, in that, you know, we, we're a township, we, we don't want to create an HOA for the entire township. But then, we have some developers that come in, they're like, all right, so what do you guys want to see? Let's work with you. That's awesome. Then we have others that say, nope, doesn't say it, not doing it. I don't care what Hinkley wants.
Right?
And, and so therein lies genuinely our struggle on a, on a case-by-case basis. Every single time we're going through this, for me, it's very complicated to, to sit up here and say, all right, let's add more regulation, when the entire point of being in a township is to get away from regulation. But then you have people then that take it to extremes. And then there's enough of public outcry that, okay, now we, we have to regulate this.
Right.
And it just, whoo.
So now you're full circle, and you don't want to move forward with lighting at this point? So, but?
Well, I mean, I, I, I like the idea of, because light is honestly likely to be mo- more obtrusive to a neighbor or intrusive to a neighbor than odor, unless it's like tremendously noxious.
There's a pretty famous case law when you study nuisance law.
Yeah.
It's all odor. So that's.
Really? Okay. Fascinating. Certainly more so than vibration.
Do you remember that, Cindy? Probably went through it at a different time than I did, but. No?
Too long, too far along.
But simultaneously, if we're going to just be spinning our tires, putting in regulations we can't enforce, then there's no point in adding it. One of the other ideas that was floated was projectiles, but I think that's pretty well-covered with dangerous.
Yeah, and, you know, I, I know that we've had the submission on golf balls before. I, I think that the challenge is, you know, anytime that something's entering someone else's property and causing damage, it's really a civil suit. And then if it's an ongoing issue, it's an injunction that you seek as part of a civil suit. It's not really a zoning matter, because, you know, for instance, if my neighbor had goats and they came over and they destroyed all of my property, you know, $5,000 for landscaping, and then they repaired the fence, and they came back over and they destroyed $5,000 for the prop, you know, property, that would have been a nuisance. You would, you would have to take them to court for the damage, for the landscaping, you know, the damage that they caused. And if it's ongoing and you can show that it's ongoing, then maybe the court would consider doing an injunction in addition to monetary penalty, remedy. But it's not a zoning matter to say, you need to have better fences, because your goat, goats are coming over and eating my landscape.
So are you basically proposing leaving it as is?
The other thing to note is, how many times has, has the nuisance section been enforced against someone? It's just not a section that's routinely used, you know? It exists, and it exists in, in law as well, but it's very rare that someone is.
Well, I mean, it's the same with like a libel or slander, like the, the, the standard of, of proof is so high.
Does anyone else have any comments on that, or are we okay now, taking that off our? Nothing else on the old business. Chairman's report, the next regular zoning commission meeting will be November 2nd, 2023. At 7:00 PM. Architectural standards. I just want to read this brief letter that I wrote with respect to architecture review standards. So as many of you know, the township trustees passed this request that the zoning commission move forward with architecture design standards. I do think that the board, this commission has, at this point, my computer told me I'm not going to, so that's fine. I do think that the commission at this point has enough, you know, people that support moving forward with architecture standards. I, I don't think that the township trustees should have passed a resolution like this, because I think that it takes away from either the actual or the perceived independence of this commission. But I think that they did that to try to speak as a hall, as opposed to individually. We're, we're an independent board, and we have the authority to make our decisions as to what topics we would like to discuss. I'm pretty confident this is going to be my last year as chair of this board. And so the question would be, do we want to start architectural standards now? Do we want to move forward with the amendments that we've already advanced? Because architectural standards will take probably six to eight months, would be my guess, to, to truly finalize a meaningful section. Or do, you know, what, what, what do we want to do with these architectural standards? Or do we not want to do anything at this point? Those are all options for us to decide. And so I would love to hear whether you'd like to see architectural standards on the new business for next month. The only other item that I have on the agenda for new business for next month, and the last item that I had on my plan before we tried to move forward with reviewing all of the language and potentially moving forward with the text amendment, was the multifamily units within senior housing, whether we want to keep that or not. That was the last topic discussion that was on our list to cover before we move forward. So what would you, as a commission, like us to do?
I, for one, like to see us finish up the amendments, get that done, put in, so to speak.
We have a fair number of edits already, so going through a whole nother section. And I will say, I've spoken, I, I, I've spoken to, uh, other people about architecture standards, and someone referred me to Branger Township apparently has a very robust architectural standard section, surprisingly. And so that's another section that you might want to review as you move forward with that.
Prairie Township down there, Columbus, also has pretty, pretty robust. I think by and large, actually, Dave, I'm surprised to hear you say like, all right, let's hold off on this, because I felt like I was the sole person that's like, all right, let's, and the one thing I would say is, if we do move forward with architectural standards, I think it would be very worthwhile to have a working session where we can have someone come in and truly educate us on different architectural styles. Because just working with this one, this one project, when we were talking about a hip roof, I, I, you, you could see the architect like, get rigid, like, no, that's not what I have for it. He, like, he, and if we are going to use technical terms, we need to know what they are. And, and I think if we're going to do this, we need to be educated on it as a group.
I think without a doubt, this will involve some level of consultants being brought in to make it a meaningful area. There's also, we have to guide a needle there, as opposed to what we can do as a township. And so that's going to be a learning game for us. And that's why this will not be a one or two-month venture, this.
It's gonna be a project.
Six to eight months, at least, venture to come through this. And that's why, do we want to hold off on everything else until we work through that? Or do we want to work through the rest of the amendments that we've already captured? And then come back to architecture standards as the start of a next text amendment?
As you stated before, we've, we've got quite a few amendments already in there. So I don't know if you have the list of all the amendments, like, memorized. I certainly don't. But I think before, we're gonna say, yeah, make it new business or make it old business. I think we should look at this and say, all right, these amendments are important enough, we want to get them in now. It, I mean, if it's just amendments of like semicolons, which I know it's not, okay, yeah, that stuff can wait. But I think some of these amendments are probably gonna be, all right, let's put the text forward and potentially then move on to what's next on the, on the docket, so to speak.
So from the two people that have spoken, and myself, it really sounds like at least the three of us are leaning towards moving forward for next month with the one item of business that I referenced. And then the start of the review, again, all of the amendments that have already incorporated into the proposal. And then hold off on architecture standards until we've moved forward potentially with what we've already got, at least to Medina Planning.
We can make that four.
All right. Perfect, okay.
Perfect, so it's unanimous.
So it's unanimous, that's what we'll do for the next meeting, is we will plan to do a review of that language regarding multifamily dwelling units and for senior housing. And then we will also begin a review of all of the topics again, to see if we still like that language or if we want any refinements to that language. Perfect. I have absolutely nothing else, Mr. Crew.
Nothing.
Mr. Marzullo.
Obviously, you got the email that was specifically referencing. Um, obviously, you got the email, um, that was specifically referencing, um, signage from you, you had Suzanne send out the entire board regarding, um, the large signage downtown.
Oh, yes.
Is that something that you want to address for public or?
I think inspect, so this is really a enforcement issue, not a, um, not a zoning commission issue. And so Inspector Wilson, you're welcome to address that.
All right, thank you. I, uh, contacted our legal on that and they.
Yeah, why don't you not say what, uh, what legal said, maybe just say what your current understanding is.
Thank you. My current understanding is that, uh, this is a first amendment issue. And, uh, we have to be, uh, I have to be very careful when I police, uh, any type of political advertisement.
So does that mean that as long as it is a political message, we have no ability to regulate size, location, anything?
That's my.
Like a flag?
That's my understanding.
You are welcome to reach out to Leo. Everyone here is a part of, welcome to reach out to legal if you want a legal opinion from the full commission. I will say the other thing I'll note is while we received a specific email on the large size signage, our code, if you read that as as signage, we don't allow any business to have, it says each business, this is for temporary signs. D, other temporary signs, no permit required. In addition to above, each business shall be permitted to erect one additional temporary sign, not to exceed six square feet in area or four feet in height. Such sign may be displayed for a period of time not to exceed 90 days and a 12 month period. And so we also have several businesses that have multiple temporary signs up. And so that would also, if you read that as, you know, if you incorporated political signs within that, that would also problematic for all of those because each one of those businesses could only have one sign.
One temporary.
One temporary. So if you wanted to support three candidates, you couldn't. If you wanted to support one candidate, multiple times, you couldn't. So that would be another consideration. There's actually, when you look at town center, numerous businesses that would be right of violating or signage for if political signs were considered, uh, under our code.
So I'm understanding if someone put up a billboard in the middle of town, there's nothing we can do about it if it has rotating political messaging.
Well, a- as I say, uh, we're getting into first amendment stuff here. It's it's not, you know, zoning. So I I would suggest for clarification, you talk.
I I think it would be worthwhile to to get clarification because as much as I is my my understanding of the first amendment would be, okay, yeah, you can say virtually whatever you want. But you still have to follow the constructs of the law.
If I could, many years ago, on 130th, we had somebody put up roughly a six foot sign with lights for his political campaign. It was left there several weeks and even in the months after the election in November. We were advised, uh, the BCA at the time that there's two things you don't mess with. It's somebody's political opinion and somebody's religious committed, and whether it's on a sign, no matter how big it is, whether it has lights or not, you don't mess with those two things at this level, period.
Okay, I just want to make sure that, A, it's fully addressed because I know there have been quite a few questions about it. And we're clarifying.
Although I will say that our zoning regulation is content neutral and that is a strong thing when it comes to first amendment review.
And I'll just dress, address quickly, like, because I was working with this this week, the size of a sign on a building. Uh, you measure the linear foot of the building and it's one and a half times that for the square footage of a sign. So if you have a big building, you can have a pretty big sign, uh, per per our code. Has nothing to do with the the politics, but.
Yep. Thank you.
Thank you. Yeah, we've received several emails that are for not just this past month, I think, and and the past couple of months that have really pertained to enforcement issues. And so the enforcement issues really are directed towards Inspector Wilson to the idea, to the extent that, you know, it might provide insight as to how else we should amend our code. It certainly relates to us, but any enforcement is handled through Inspector Wilson and not through this commission and certainly not through me. So, and I won't interpret our code for anyone that emails and ask for interpretation of the code. I would never give interpretation of our code. That's for Inspector Wilson to do as well. I will only speak on interpretations as it relates to this commission as we're discussing the language. Mr. Man, go ahead.
And obviously, you know, we're in the middle of an interesting cycle. Um, and there have been there, there have been a lot of accusations that are flying around and just want to make sure it's clear for all of us. I have never spoken to anyone about any sort of zoning thing away from this commission. Have you?
No.
No? Mr. Manuel? Okay. I just, because there have been a lot of accusations of conversations, cell phones, meetings, all of these things that are directed at a lot of different people. And I just want to make it clear, it certainly hasn't involved any of me and it sounds like no one else on the commission.
Mr. Riley?
I I made enough comments.
I was just going to say, I hope we keep all of our politics out of our decision making and our agendas in the next month.
Good evening. Um, I have three things. First of all, I'm very sad to hear that Marcus will not continue on as chairman next year. I think he's done a fantastic job and I just want to commend you for serving, um, with a sound ethics and, um, character. I think you've done a fantastic job for this board. Um, as it pertains to fireworks, the trustees decided last year, and I was digging through the minutes, um, that we were not in favor of any type of regulations as it pertains to fireworks. I don't have the meeting in front of me, but I did search for it. Um, and then lastly, we did not make a resolution for architectural design standards. It was just a suggestion of something that we would like to move forward with. Thank you. Thank you all for all, all that you do.
One more thing I forgot. Um, I know by November I have to, because my term ends at the end of this year. So by November I have to say yea or nay, I would be happy to serve another five years.
Do you want that email?
I do want that email, thank you.
Got it.
Lisa Rushworth, 1006 Bellis Road, uh, had a couple of bullet items. First of all, I was kind of disappointed that y'all weren't going to be adding the light or, you know, particles larger than dust, uh, to the 4.8 nuisance. And I I know you you said that it's really just a civil thing. Um, but I, my understanding is that it being in the zoning would then be a basis for, like you said, you could go and get a main day misaction through the court. Uh, specific to the golf balls, there is case law that basically is you put your house next to a golf club. That was silly. Um, the the kind of restricts the the ability for them to say, hey, you know, golf ball winged in damaged something. Um, you you, I I don't know what it's called in Ohio, a lot of other places. It's called the happy hooker exception, just to be a little goofy. Um, and if a golf course moved in after your house was there, they have a lot more liability than if you bought a house next to an existing golf course. Uh, so part of, part of the reason that that we had talked about it was giving another avenue of, you know, hey, you're violating the zoning rules. Whether I live next to a golf course that was there or not, you know, you're not allowed, you know, I I can't sandblast and blow dust into your yard. Now, this guy also can't have a bunch of golf balls flying over into someone else's yard. Someone can't keep putting more and more floodlights up into my front yard that that it would be a legal basis for saying, you know, hey, this says that's not okay. Um, one of the other things that I did want to bring up, um, with some of the earlier edits, you had looked at rezoning, uh, the Buzzard Cove corner, uh, into residential. That didn't happen and it was going to be supposed to be revisited, um, because we had been looking at some of the use changes uh, that that then turned into, let's rezone it. Because it didn't get rezoned, uh, it just seemed like as a suggestion, we could go back to looking at, you know, what what would would reasonable uses for that business area? Um, and then I.
That was one of the topics that we've discussed and that's one of the things that we'll revisit again.
Yeah, just when y'all were discussing what was coming next, I didn't hear that one and.
Revisiting is moving it to res.
Right, right. But the business usage, that's what I was saying.
Business usage, we already reviewed, we started to make commitments to the text and now we have to decide whether we want to move forward with that. Amendment or whether we're going to change it again. But that was already one of the topics.
Okay.
Incorporate into the.
Okay. Um, and then the last one, i- is interesting is to talk about political signage. Uh, I got pretty much the same response when I had asked about some very large, not political signage, that it's first amendment and you kind of have to be careful. Um, you know, and, you know, I get government can't regulate religion, so I have a giant church sign up, you know, something. I I've got a political sign, um, e- but even, you know, just other kinds of expression can get into free speech. I I just find it a little bit odd that.
Need more example on exactly what you're saying, because I think it's hard to understand the context if you don't know.
Okay, well, I, and I had specifically, uh, asked Mr. Wilson about the signage at Buzzard Cove. They had six or eight different very large flags that they erected. Um, they had a couple of other, uh, temporary signs. And the answer he had given me at the time was you really have to be careful about regulating that kind of thing because it can get into first amendment issues, wh- which I, you know, fair enough. But then I questioned the the verbiage that's in the zoning resolution. If we're not going to enforce the signage because we don't want to impede on people's first amendment rights, that's kind of silly, right? I mean, to i- if if it's going to be enforced as what we wrote, but it it kind of sounded like it ended up being content based, like if I put the.
Political signs?
No, absolutely not.
Um, like now open.
Yes, that's what I'm saying, but but what the answer that I was given was that any kind of signage, she treads carefully on. And and that's why I said if if.
When you do regulate the signage, Inspector Wilson's regulated.
Yeah, I I talked to them about the temporary signs and they chose not to, they took them down and chose not to do permit. I don't remember saying about first amendment.
No, no, we were in the part, I I can tell you exactly when it was because it was when they had, we, there was the site walkthrough for the, um, BCA thing where they were looking to do their haunted barn. Uh, everybody kind of convened in the car park ahead of time. And I I said, you know, hey, you know, we've tried to email about these signs. Here, you're looking at them now and and you had explained to me and and it, to a degree, that I kind of go through like the the P, businesses are people too, sort of Supreme Court stuff. So I could kind of see the logic of it, it's a first amendment issue, but it's just something to bring up that, you know, i- if it really is specific to religious or political speech, I I guess that that would be, you know, just an exception that maybe isn't worth documenting in the rules. But if as an enforcement standard, we're, you know, kind of going to blow off anybody because it is, it is a first amendment, you know, I'm expressing something that I wanted to put out there in the world. Then the regulation doesn't really have much meaning and and it's kind of superfluous. Um, so those were my bullet items. Thank you for your time.
Anything else? No. I will entertain a motion for adjournment at 8:44 PM.
So moved.
Moved by Marswell.
Second.
Second by human. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?